Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our board meeting. And I'll recall the meeting for November 5th, 2013 to order.
I don't think they're hearing you. There we go.
First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Employee recognition. Is it on? Okay. First one we have is Jill Jacobson-Bauer, juvenile detention counselor, 25 years. Is Jill with us today? Steve?
Just here, this is presented to Jill. A grateful recognition of 25 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Please give her our best regards.
Thank you. Kurt Nelson. Good morning.
Yeah.
Kurt's been with us for 15 years.
Right up here.
Yeah. 15 years, and again, it says, "Presented to you in grateful recognition of 15 years of outstanding service." There you go. And congratulations. And now excellence in performance club, Marie Fournier. Is Marie with us today? Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Here, and I'll read what it says here for the units. Marie Fournier, eGovernment Administrator, is recognized for her assistance and support towards the Intranet redesign and restructuring of the Human Resources and Safety webpages. Marie provided expert advice on the development of the site and recommended ways of making the webpage visually appealing and user-friendly. Once the decision was made on the design changes, Marie quickly made the changes to the site so the new information and format could be quickly distributed to county employees. The Information Services Department should be proud of the work that Marie does, and she should be congratulated on a job well done. And Marie? We have this for you. Congratulations. You're quite technologically advanced. I had my cellphone out the other day, and my daughter said, "That, that should be in a museum." And next we have Lisa Koozie, Deputy Recorder for Employee Recognition. Good morning. Aren't your last name right? Okay, good. Lisa Koozie, Deputy Recorder. This past year in our office, we have had numerous changes in our vitals area, including the statute change to allow same-sex marriages. Lisa has done excellent, has done excellent work to update all the necessary forms. She created an online application that allows customers to come to the courthouse with a completed application. This greatly improves the customer service experience for the applicants and is efficient for staff as well. Lisa? Thank you. And Jennifer Pearson. What would we do without Jennifer? Jennifer Pearson, our Human Resources Coordinator, has provided outstanding work and dedication as the Chairperson of the Clay County Safety Committee. Her diligent work on the Emergency Response Guide and county-wide emergency alert system was instrumental in improving Clay County preparedness in response to a natural or man-made emergency. Over the past year, the Clay County Safety Committee has reorganized its structure, implemented an emergency response plan, established an emergency alert system, created a safety training database, and conducted several emergency action drills. Because of Jennifer's commitment to safety and security, Clay County employees are better prepared to respond for future disasters. Thank you, Jennifer, and... Mark Sloan. Mark said he doesn't want my cellphone. Mark Sloan, Information Services Director, provided outstanding performance in deploying the Clay County Emergency Alert Notification System. He played an instrumental role in procuring the hardware, programming the software, and training county employees on the proper use of the emergency alert system. Mark was diligent to quickly identify and remedy problems that arose early in the process. His expertise in the communication systems of the county has made him an invaluable asset to this organization. Mark should be congratulated for a job well done. Now, we will call on our Sheriff, Bill Burkwest, for citizen recognition. Sheriff?
Thank you for letting us be here today for these two awards. And if you three gentlemen... Not that I want to put you on the spot, but if you'll each just introduce yourselves so we know who we're talking about.
I'm Troy Morris. I'm a fisherman. These two gentlemen hold Silver Lake.
Randy Trader.
Mike Joyce.
Okay, and Lieutenant Steve Todd, if you want to come up?
Morning. Detective Jason Hicks had done an investigation. We had received a phone call in our office that an incident had happened out at Silver Lake, and Detective Hicks did, did an investigation on it and submitted a report. Based on Detective's, Detective Hicks's report, I nominated the two gentlemen behind me for a life-saving award. I'm going to read excerpts of the letter that I submitted to the sheriff for you. On October 2nd, 2013, at approximately 1,600 hours, citizens Randy Trader and Michael Joyce were fishing in their boat on Silver Lake, south of Holly, in Clay County. Trader and Joyce heard a yell for help, but initially thought it may have been coming from a child fishing on a dock. Trader and Joyce heard the yell for help again, which focused their attention on a man in the water who was waving his arm, clinging to a partially submerged boat. Trader and Joyce boated to the man in distress. Upon their arrival, they found Troy Morris clinging to the side of his 14-foot, flat-bottomed alumacraft boat. Trader and Joyce pulled Morris into their boat. Morris told, told Trader and Joyce that he had been in the water for around five minutes, and that he wasn't sure how much longer he could hold on. Trader and Joyce transported Morris back to the shore, and also towed his boat back to shore. Investigation revealed that Morris was heading back towards shore after fishing. Morris inadvertently let go of the tiller on his outboard motor, and the motor quickly spun sideways, rapidly turning the boat, which threw Morris out of the boat. He was able to grab the side of his boat and turn off the motor, however, his weight on the side of the boat caused it to flood with water and become approximately three-quarters submerged. Morris stated he was very thankful he was able to get the attention of both Trader and Joyce, and that they pulled him out of the water, and then helped him with his boat to get it out of the water. Morris told the rescuers, as well as told Detective Hicks, that he believed he was going to drown if he had not been pulled from the water by Trader and Joyce. Based on my review of the incident, I am nominating citizens Randy Trader and Michael Joyce for the life-saving award, as their actions prevented Troy Morris from drowning in Silver Lake. Thank you.
Yes, yes, I would like to say something. I'd like to thank everybody that was a part of this, to acknowledge these men. And, uh, at the time, we didn't really think it was too serious, but the seriousness was very serious. I have two kids, a five and a six-year-old, that, that still have their dad. You know, a person doesn't think anything's going to happen, you know? I go out fishing alone all the time, and some people say this is coincidence, that these two men were there. And they're fishing a lot, and nobody's there, even though there's houses close. Me, on the other hand, I want to give the credit to God Almighty for watching, for watching out for me. And, uh, these guys weren't even going to be at Silver. They were going to go to Turtle Lake. They just, they just turned on the last minute to go to Silver, and I don't even think you even realized why, you know, didn't even know he was going to Silver. So I want to give, I want to make sure God gets the glory in this, too, above all these two men for, for being heroic, or, you know, they do deserve this award. And, uh, I want to thank everybody that participated and acknowledged these men. And, uh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. It was a strange set of coincidences. It took me an hour and a half to get this guy out of bed in the mornings. And once I convinced him to go fishing, and we decided to go to Turtle Lake, and so we were on our way to Turtle Lake, and at the last minute, he turned to Silver Lake. So it was just too strange set of coincidences that we happened to be at this lake. It was a beautiful day, too. And it just started to rain a little heavier, and when we heard the howlers for help, at first, we thought his motor had stopped, and thought, well, let's go help him out. And we got there, and we saw this, two white hands hanging on to the boat, and the head is barely below the water. Now we knew the seriousness of the situation. But, uh, once I, we were there.
Thank you.
Kim Savage-Joel, United Way of Cal State Campaign Report. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. Just wanted to come back and give a final report of our campaign this year. We had goals, $17,000, and as you can see by the handout, we exceeded that quite a bit by, total pledge was $18,703 and some change. We had a 15% increase in donations this year, and 11% increase in the number of donors. We started some new, new ways of doing things this year, and I think we'll stick with them next year, and implement it throughout countywide. So I want to thank you for your support of the campaign, and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next item is citizens to be heard, and I don't think we have any at this time. Gentlemen, let's pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The bills are paid. Approval of minutes of October 15th and 22nd, 2013.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We're now going into a closed sessions for labor negotiations. We have a motion to close the session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we're in closed session at this time. All right, we're back in session, and Darren, would you like to present to us what you have, please?
Basically, we have the Corrections Contract for 2014, 15, and 16, and a proposal to accept that contract as a 2%, 2%, and 2% in each of the years.
Okay. Your wish, gentlemen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carried.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Next item is to review and adopt the Clay County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan with Lieutenant Brian Green. Welcome, Lieutenant.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Brian. Well, um, I have the plan here. If you guys got five minutes to go through it.
No.
Of course, you all will, we've been working on this mitigation plan for the last at least two years. It's the five-year update mitigation plan. Plan was completed sometime in June, sent up to Homeland Security in Minnesota. They approved it, and then they forwarded it to FEMA. Two weeks ago, FEMA notified me after the government got back to work that they had also approved the plan, and I'm just here today to say if you adopt the plan and to have a resolution for the plan. And if there are any questions, I guess.
Yeah, one question. Is there any major differences in previous, from previous plans?
Uh, yeah, it's kind of redone, but a lot of the same hazards as before is, you know, current again today. So, again, they've, the major difference in this plan, I think, is that they have a, we have put forward in the plan a way that we can keep it updated. So each year, I have to go back, form my committee, go back in there and make sure the things that we've been talking about, that progress has been made, or if something new has come up that we need to put that into the plan.
Thank you.
But, and your questions, Todd, I should say, no, not really, it's not. A lot of the same stuff that wasn't there before.
Sure. We have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion.
It's the resolution here that we're removing? Second page of this.
Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. I'll leave a hard copy with Vicki, and then you'll have a hard copy there, and then if you like a little electronic print of it, I certainly can send it to anybody who would like to read it.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
Tell you what, let's jump down to committee reports at this time. We're a little bit ahead, and some of these people aren't here. Chief?
Frank?
See, I went to Agassar Recreation Trails, uh, the 28th. There we went over, there's been a lot of infringement on, um, trails where people are coming out a little bit too far, going on the trails and stuff. They came up with a permit now that they have to fill out if they're going to start working on trail territory. Pretty much covered that meeting, also on the 28th. Had a meeting with the Dilworth City concerning the policing situation out there. We just went through initial, initial things as far as what are some possibilities. Family health care, October 24th, there was just a routine meeting there going over stuff. We also had an emergency, not emergency, another family health care meeting last night, recognizing it as a charitable organization. There was some other stuff that needed to be covered. Also, November 3rd, last Friday, we went down to Elba Lake. John and I went down to Elba Lake, and we had some discussion on the District Four meeting. They went over the, a new formula for the County State Eight Highway Program, and that was discussed, and also they went over the Affordable Care Act a little bit. I'll bet John would have some more on that, but pretty much the two discussion items that were held down there.
Okay. We'll go back to the regular agenda. Julie? Request to hire Julie? You're on.
I'm sorry. The sheriff had me.
Well, he has a badge and a gun, so.
Yeah, I gotta listen to him. I'm sorry.
A little bit more important than the rest of us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What agenda item would you like me to discuss first?
How about the first one, to hire a full-time correctional officer?
Okay. We have a vacancy in our full-time corrections officer position. One of our officers is going to be working for the Sheriff's Department as a deputy, and I'm requesting to replace his position as part of the DOC, Department of Corrections Planning, jail plan for staffing.
No major budget implications?
None.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, uh, if some more of our prisoners are going to be transferred out next year, do we still need, is there still going to be overcrowding, or what? Probably don't understand the position as well as I should, you know, but, I mean, we're moving more people out, we still going to have a, do we still have to fill all the positions here, or?
Yes, we do, because you're still dealing with the same amount of inmates. There's just, there's the same amount of work, you just have a few less in the cell blocks.
So... Department of Corrections requires...
These are, yes.
But we're not dealing with the overcrowding one right now, right?
No, no, this is just the regular...
The next one's going to be, because I want to comment on the overcrowding one, so.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Julie, the next one.
The next one is, I'm requesting in the 2014 budget, a jail overcrowding corrections officer. This position will coordinate all the out-of-county inmates. They will coordinate with the court, with attorneys, with the other jails that we'll be housing in. They will be going through all the inmates and determining who can be shipped and who cannot be shipped. We're talking up to easily 20, anywhere from 20 to possibly 30 inmates on a daily basis. For example, today, we have 22 inmates shipped out. We're going to ship again either today or tomorrow, another four, so we're looking at 26 just right now. We need a full-time person to handle that workload. They'll be doing the bookings and the releases and the processing, and it's pretty time-consuming, and right now, we're having a very difficult time keeping up with it. So my request is for 2014, but I would like to start this person in December, because we do need to start removing our beds in December. It's going to take a week for each cell block. I do have money in our budget to cover this one month of expense, so there won't be an impact as far as 2013 budget. When we replace the Assistant Jail Administrator, there's a cost savings with the person we put in there, that would cover this, this cost difference.
Yeah. We had extensive discussion regarding this position, first off, right during the normal budget process during the course of the year, when you presented the need. And then in addition to that, our Jail Needs Committee has met and talked about this extensively there, and, and our committee certainly fully supports that, that this request should stay in the budget for 2014. It's one thing to say we have, we might have six or nine less beds, but that doesn't mean... Actually, the workload can increase as opposed to decrease, because now you're, you're still responsible both for transporting them where they're going, and then to get them back for all the necessary needs that they might have to be, whether it's for court and all these other things. So, so the amount of, of labor actually goes up in that instance, and, and this is all part of this process that we're going to have to watch over the years, as this whole threshold of the more and more we have going out, and the costs associated with them, as to when does that become an even more significant trigger point for a new facility? And that, our jail committee is back together working on that, and we're trying to come up with a, a timeline to, to work that out as well, in terms of financing that with as little impact to our taxpayers as possible, but that's in the process. But, anyway, I, I just, this is, this is an important position to have, and I would, I would move that we approve that request.
Discussion.
This is, I understand that it's covered in the 13 budget. Is it also in your 14 budget?
The request is for the 2014 budget, but I have enough money in my 2013 budget to cover December's wages.
Right. Wants to hire early.
Want to hire early.
Right. Yeah, that, that part I understand, okay. But it is covered, already approved in the, or already in the budget. Oh, it's in our preliminary.
Yes. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Carried. Julie, you got it?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sheriff? Steve? Request to fill and advertise positions for West Central Regional Juvenile Detention Center, Steve Larson.
Good morning.
Our director.
Good morning. Actually, I have two requests before you guys this morning. Number one, we recently had a resignation in our secure detention facility, and we would be looking for permission to fill that with another full-time person. An employee had been with us for a number of years and was on step 10, so this position is accounted for in the 2014 budget, and we would actually then realistically see an additional savings in that budget by rehiring, had someone had a lower, lower step, step. So that would be my first request.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried, Steve?
Thank you. And my second request is, the juvenile center has had extensive meetings over the, the last year, and looking at converting some of our roster hours into full-time positions, with the intent of making sure that safety and security of the facility is covered by having full-time staff on every shift. We presented a budget in, in June that would have us hiring, requesting us hiring, one AM/PM counselor in secure, one overnight counselor in secure, and one overnight position in non-secure. And again, those funds are our budgeted for 2014. Our advisory board that looks over our, our 10-member advisory board, that looks over our secure program, has approved the, the budget, this most recently in October, so.
And, and, for example, Clay County's share to this is the, that's been built into the bed price purchase, right?
Correct.
Of which we have that, the new bed price purchase, we already did adopt, and that's in our 2014 budget.
That's correct.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried, Steve?
Could I have one, make one other request?
Sure.
In the event that somebody from the non-secure program would shift into any of those secure positions, would I have permission to, would you want me to come back to request approval to hire that position?
I, I would move that we authorize the backfilling of a position to replace.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Clay County's main lady, Kathy McKay, request to fill emergency preparedness coordination position.
At least we're at a roll today.
Good mornings.
Good morning, gentlemen.
We're due for a no, a no.
Oh, no, I, I'm afraid of that. I wanted to butt head of Steve, but he wouldn't let me.
I think you waited for the right time.
Thanks for your support. I'm here to request to hire Sheriff Burquist. Where is he?
Oh, no, I have a resignation in my public health emergency preparedness coordinator position, and I'm, so I'm requesting to fill that position. The funding had been reduced this last grant period. It had been full-time, we've had funding to support that. We have emergency preparedness funding and CRI funding through the state and federal government, but it had been reduced now. So, I anticipate that we, we ideally would like to have a point-eight position, but if the salary of someone comes in with a lot of experience, then I would need to lower that to a point-six. We need to meet the funding that we have allotted from the state and feds, so I would prefer to have a point-eight, but I'd like some flexibility in case it ends up being a point-six.
So Kathy, you know, this was a good deal back when this first came on, because it helped us just establish the whole process for emergency preparedness for public health reasons.
Right.
Once that, once you establish and you go through that, I know you're constantly updating and reviewing that, but the, so when we had that, we did have full-time, that was a full-time person, I think, for like two or three years, wasn't it at least where we had?
Yes, probably the last five years.
Yeah, five years, yeah. But we had like two or three different people in that.
That's correct.
Yeah. But, but that process now, it still requires an annual review of our preparedness plan, I'm assuming.
Right, there's some requirements for exercises as well, so we have to be involved with functional exercises with the county, you know, with Bryan Green and other counties, surrounding counties. There's some requirements for us to provide that.
John?
I guess I'm wondering how you handle, I mean, I can, I can understand there's only so much money to, as far as time, but what if we had an emergency situation? Does that person now who's only contracted for twenty-four hours accept that they'll have to work eighty or a hundred hours a week in order to get the job done?
That's correct, and that person is just one individual that's coordinating and organizing all of this. My whole staff has to respond to emergencies. So as we hire anyone from nurses to support staff, they are aware that if there's a public health emergency, everybody responds and everybody works and.
That, that goes into an overall even higher plan than, than this.
Right, that's.
Deals with law enforcement and everything, so.
But it does, I mean, even if they're only contracted for very part-time, they're still required to.
Right, during the flood, we do what we need to do to evacuate residents.
If there was a train derailment or if there was.
That's exactly right. And, and this also covers Wilken County, I think I mentioned that in my information sheet, but Clay, Wilken, so the funding and the individual that we have covers the work in Wilken County as well, so there is that travel.
So does Wilken get dollars to share in the funding of it?
Yes, there's about sixty-six thousand dollars in my grant total, and about nineteen of those are allotted for Wilken County.
And they're willing to put that in towards this?
Yes, in fact, I had a conversation with the director who wanted to ensure that this person would continue to cover Wilken County.
Gentlemen, your wishes? We'll approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Frank? I have one question on, you know, it's based in the number of, the funding is based on how many hours a week. I mean, if we don't get enough funding, we only need a prisoner for twenty-four hours. If we get more funding, we need the prisoner for thirty-two hours.
Well, the reason why we've done so well in Clay County and we're one of the top in the state, I would say actually probably the top, as you recall from our review from the Centiford Disease Control, the federal, at the federal level, we have a ninety-eight percent. So that's extremely high for our preparedness, and that is based on the fact that we have one dedicated person that works on this and is actually a resource for the region. So, you know, we're in a really good spot because we've had a dedicated individual. Some of the other counties across the state not, not doing that well because they have piecemealed it out a bit, so there's not one person that's focused on that. Working on the training, working with the, my individual right now works with the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, all the emergency response teams, so. Ideally, yes, I, I would, I wish we could continue to have a full-time person. We lost funding from the North Dakota side. We work with North Dakota as well, Fargo, in preparedness, and we had some funding through the North Dakota Department of Health. Their funding got cut, so therefore, we got cut as well.
John?
How would you, how do you advertise this as if, you know, the length, the number of hours is going to be, like you said, is going to be based on what pay you have to pay. So, how do you advertise for a position that you don't know for sure how many hours they're going to be hired for?
I'm hoping Darren and I can work on that together and come up with a plan.
Sounds complicated to me.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Carrie. Kathy, could you give us a brief update on flu shot situation, how that's going?
We provided flu shots to employees during our wellness screening, and we will have some open flu shot clinics.
Good to have them started.
For the next, in the month of November, we'll, we'll have open clinics for people to come to the flu shot clinics. We've provided quite a bit with long-term care facilities and, and the senior centers. Many flu shots have been provided already by our department, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
We'll continue till we get rid of all the flu vaccine. Okay, thank you.
Will somebody be coming in for Tim?
No, we'll have, Colleen and I'll handle that.
Okay, let's do that at this time. Approval of request for single-lot plot structural properties. Colleen and John?
Tim is election judge today, so he's occupied all day with, with that. And he asked for me to, to represent him on this issue. It's a request for creating a one-lot plotted subdivision. If you look on your, on your map, this is where the gravel pit is on eighty-six. We used to be a lot more familiar with eighty-six since it was gravel, because it was so dusty and there were a lot of complaints and so on, but it's, we've got that area tarred, so we don't have those complaints any longer. But this, this group is wanting a one-lot plotted subdivision so that they, and then later, they're going to request for it to be highway commercial, and they're going to construct a, a facility there, the black cement block manufacturing plant for Structural Block Incorporated, which I think is, we, Planning Commission felt it was a very good industry and a good location for, for adding this to the county. So we would encourage the adoption of this one-lot plotted subdivision. You can see the, we had questions, the only questions I think we really had during our debate is that much of this lot is wetland and not buildable, but there is, there's nine and a half acres buildable. It's in one spot and five, five-point-one acres in another spot, and that's where they're planning on building, building their buildings. So we would recommend that we, we create this one-lot plotted subdivision with the conditions that are listed on the first page of your, of your handout. Those conditions would be that all roads accesses are designed, permitted, and constructed to specifications provided by the Clay County Highway Engineer. Number two, the applicant must contact Clay Soil and Water Conservation District to have wetland evaluation conducted and shall provide documentation of said evaluation to the Clay County Planning Office. Number three, the applicant must provide a copy of the MPCA Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan to the Planning Office prior to commencing any earthmoving activities, including road improvements. And four, the proposed lot must be rezoned to highway commercial before any development can take place in order for the plot to be valid. So that's what we are recommending that we, that we do at this point. I don't know if Colleen has any other comments?
The overhaul is already signed up on the, on the plan, so he's fine with access and road situation there.
So considering the, the recommendation of the Planning Commission, I would move that we create this one-lot plotted subdivision.
I'll second with a comment, or a question, or a couple of questions, John, maybe you can help. During the process, did they, did they talk about amount of traffic that, that's going to generate?
Yeah, they did. I don't remember the number of, of trucks and so on, there would be, there will be some in, you know, increased traffic, but they're going to be using the materials from that, from that location, so that would be that many less loads going out probably that in aggregate, but it'll be now going out as block. Do you remember, Colleen, the number?
They figured that it would equal what the traffic is right now.
Oh, okay.
Because it would increase concrete, block, but decrease the raw material going out of the site because it's right next to it, so they could balance out pretty well with traffic there now.
Well, I agree with the findings of the Planning Commission, and it seems like a really good, good fit for, for that area, so.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie? We'll continue with our committee reports and go to Kevin, are you ready?
Yeah.
No, no, just a minute, Kevin, excuse me. Let's go back to number eight. Appointment of delegates for Association of Minnesota Counties Annual Conference. In front of you here, basically a formality.
Mr. Chairman, this is for the annual meeting, right?
Yes.
And if we have somebody else from the county, I am going to be unable to attend that, that meeting, so if we have somebody else who's going to be going, who would like to be able to vote in my absence.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have anybody else going, so.
Well, then, then I can put my name on there, just in case last minute I pop in there, so.
We've had some years, Tim has gone, some years Kathy's gone, I think, but.
Yeah, of course, Kathy isn't here anymore.
But I thought.
No, no, I mean, I mean.
McKay?
McKay.
I thought Tim was going.
Tim went.
We don't have a room for him.
Last year, he was there, you know, but.
Because I thought that, Vicki said that Tim was going to take my room.
Oh, not familiar with that.
Could we, can we list alternate in case?
Sure, would you like to do that? Let's list.
Just list an unnamed alternate at this time?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Name an unnamed alternate at this time?
Why don't we just go, can we just, when are you sending this in?
I think it has to be in by the eleventh, is it?
Eleven.
Eleven, yes.
So why don't we just, why don't we just say if, if Tim's going to go, put Tim's name down in there. If he's not going to go, leave my name on there.
Will do.
Motion, Kevin, for?
Sure, I would make that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie, back to you, Kevin.
Okay, committee, now, so we, we actually didn't meet last week, so I have just a couple of things to report. The, we had a highway tracking meeting on the twenty-second after our meeting, and, and we got a construction update on the projects that Dave's doing on our five-year plan, and everything seems to be going really well there. You know, we talked about the bonding projects, and then he, he had, we had some discussions regarding his budget, and he was concerned about his fuel budget was running over what he had expected and budgeted for, for the year 2013. So, that was a little bit of a concern, but he also felt that there were other areas that he was light on, so hopefully it'll wash itself out. And this last Wednesday, we, we had an Oakport Joint Powers meeting, and that was, the only thing on the, on there was a request from Moore Public Service to, to take a position on, there's, there's some discussion as to who should own the land between Oakport and, and, and the, uh, Moore Public Service, who should own the land that's under the, under the water tower? And all this has to do with future rights to put up and rent tower space, or, you know, for cell tower, and so. So it was brought for our board, and our, our board did approve on a three-to-two vote that we supported Moore Public Service Commission's position. The joint, Oakport Joint Power Board is basically a zoning board, so it was kind of borderline whether we should get involved with the issue or not, but we did do that, and so there's, there's some, there's some negotiations still going on that, on that little project that's up there, so. And one last thing, if I could, and I, and I was hoping to add this to the agenda today, but I was waiting for a reply from Colleen. I didn't get it till after we had approved the agenda, but I've been dealing with a, a landowner, Clay County landowner that lives over along the Buffalo River, who's got some real issues with her property as it relates now to the new flood plain. And she's really being put into a, a difficult position where she can't even get grandfathered in on the original rates for her flood insurance, and so her flood insurance would be extremely expensive, talking several thousand dollars a year. And, so I, I did, this morning, I did inquire both with Brian and with Tim's office and Colleen's. Tim did reply that there are still, there are still some dollars left in the 2009 grant and some in the 2011 grant, and it looks like the money in the 2011 grant might be sufficient to solve this problem if we could potentially do it. I just wanted this board to know that, that I'm going to be pursuing this. The grant runs out on the thirty-first of December, so if we don't use those funds, we end up giving them back to the state, and if we can end up getting one more property out of a flood plain that.
So we're talking about purchase, I mean.
Well, that's, that's, this individual is very open to that, because right now, she doesn't think that she would even be able to sell her place for a nickel, you know, and, and she, she wants out, so.
What's your timeline on this?
Well, it has to be real soon, because the grant expires in December, so I, and I, of this money that's there now, Tim did, Colleen just gave me a note that there were still a couple of bills left to pay out of there, but I, I think it could be, knowing what she told me, the appraised value of her place was, that I think we might be able to accomplish it, and if we can help one more person get out of that situation with this grant, we should try to do it, so.
We could help her, I think that would be something.
So, I'll work with Brian and Colleen and Tim, and, and maybe we can have something for next week.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, and in, that really helps the county out too, because that, if we're, we have a buyout at eighty-seven and a half percent, that twelve-and-a-half percent helps towards our county contribution on that, so it's really advantageous to, to, help as many as we can.
And I'm not sure the DNR would agree to it either.
Right, that's exactly right.
But I think we need to pursue it, so.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yep.
John?
Okay, yeah, two weeks reporting here. I also was at highway tracking meeting on the twenty-second, and I think those things were, were talked about already that we did. There was a campaign training for, for the fundraising, for the, for the new exhibit at the HCS, the Historical and Cultural Society, on the twenty-third. Twenty-fourth was the Lakes and Prairies Community Action Meeting in Breckenridge, and of course, the big discussion there always is, you know, the, the pressure on, with all the cuts from, from Head Start and what kinds of things we can do in the communities to, to continue our mission even, even facing these cuts. And one thing is, in Wilken County, they had to close the Head Start there, but they are now putting a person, you know, in place to, to really work with communities to help them in functioning in, in better, better ways as kind of a social worker for community, community development, and, and we're hoping that position will help Wilken County in, in their needs. There's, a meeting, there was a meeting for Lakeland, this one happened to be in Moorhead on the twenty-eighth, and at our Lakeland office in South Moorhead, and things continue to go well for. to go well for, for Lakeland. And, no major problems came up. One of the discussion items though that I, I was intrigued by, there was a report on, on the fact that we've heard many, in many ways how the jails have become the mental health institutions of our society. And, one of the things that I felt and learned from that meeting is that in our process of building a new jail here, which will happen sometime down the road, that we, we need to include the people who are mental health experts. So, we can make sure that if, when we're building, that we take into consideration the fact that we have ill people in our, in our facility and that we, we account for that in our planning. And, so, if we're going to have, continue to have mentally ill people in our, in our jails, which it sounds like we will have, then we need to make sure that we have adequate means to care for them in the, in the right way. So, I, I discovered my, my feelings there that I could become a, a strong advocate for the new facility if we, if we can find a way to better, better care for the mentally ill. So, that was something that intrigued me about that meeting that I, I think we need to look at. So, I'm hoping we can, can get some people that are working with, in our jail now with the mentally ill to, to help in the long-term planning for that facility. On the 29th, it was Grand Forks. We had a, with Red River Basin Commission, interview, final interview process for a new executive director to replace Lance Yoye. Lance will be around on a contract basis for the next year on a part-time basis. But, we have a new, we'll have a new executive director that will start on the first of the year. And, it's going to be Jeff Lewis. I think most of you probably have run into Jeff at one time or another over the years. He's worked for the state pollution control for many years and so on. But, he will be, he's been on, involved there at the basin commission for the last year. And, and he is an assistant director and he will be the new executive director. And, the other person, we had two people on that were vying for this position. The other person is Joe Carnea, and he will be working, continuing to work with project development and so on for the, for the basin commission. So, that was an exciting, a big step. That'll be finalized at our meeting this week by the Board of Directors. The surveyors meeting was on the 30th of October. We met with all of the people in the county, department heads who work with land issues at all to talk about the future for, for whether or not we should have a surveyor, a county surveyor, and how we best face that into the, into the future. So, there'll be some recommendations coming later on for, for that. District four meeting, Frank talked about that and the issues that he mentioned there are certainly the primary issues. That CASA formula is a significant issue and it was unanimous vote there to, for the district to support that, encourage the counties to, to adopt resolutions of support for this, this new, new position that would, would limit the, the transfer of, the amount of money that's going to be used under different, the different formulas that have been established. So, I think that's, that's a good thing. We go backwards a bit initially, but in a couple of years we'd, we'd be ahead by, with this new recommendation. So, that was important. And, the other thing was just to, just to report on, on ways in which counties will be affected by the Affordable Care Act and so on. So, both of those were interesting discussions. So, that's all, I guess I have.
Mr. Chairman, John, I want to make comment on your, your talk on the mental health and the jail facility. You know, the, because you, you bring up some really, really good points. The, you know, right now our, the timeline that our jail committee is working on right now is probably in the next, oh, maybe throwing somewhere's out there, six to nine months to really be coming up with the, the financial plan for, for how we would deal with this. And, once, once that's established, when it, when it get into the building design and concept thing, we're, we're going to have to reopen that because what we, what we had before, obviously we need to review. And, I think you make a really good point and, and have a really good idea. And, we're going to have new players in here that, that are no longer around that we're going to have to have sitting at that table. And so, it would be, I think it would be a good idea to, to have somebody in that field of expertise to be sitting at the table while we're even planning for how that jail would be built to run, so.
On Thursday, October 24th, Lakes and Prairies Board Meeting, General Business. We went over finances. The government shutdown as yet did not affect any grants. The sequester is still being filled by cuts in Lakes and Prairies. The directors report possible joining with the West Central in the future. That's been talked about before. There was a committee for space needs for Head Start and several entities will be working on this in the future. The public schools and Head Start will be looking at different future options. On Wednesday, October 30th, I attended the Adult and Children's Mental Health, Community Health Needs Assessment at Dakota Medical Foundation. A complete report from Sanford and Essentia was presented as requested by the Affordable Care Act. We discussed the win over needs of the population regarding mental health and excellent, was an excellent presentation. There were about 150 people there from several different entities. And, Brian, before I go to you, I think we should act on this. And, I know Kevin probably wants to meet on New Year's Eve instead of Christmas Eve as I do.
Well, I, I, I think it's kind of crazy for us to come in on Christmas Eve Day.
The only thing would be is if, I think she said we don't have to make that decision yet.
No.
If we wanted to, hold on for a row, but we need to meet every, both days, I don't know.
No.
She said either, you know.
Do you want to make, do you want to comment tonight, today?
Make any difference we can?
Well, can't some of these meetings be moved to a Monday or, I mean, we, we could. I mean, we could do the 23rd, I suppose, but it'd have to be later in the day for me.
We can do that on a Monday afternoon. We haven't had a good afternoon meeting for the whole year.
Did Brian want to make a comment on this?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd have to check on that for sure. But, we publish our meeting dates at the beginning of the year and I think we have to stay with those. Even that Thursday, you know, is published ahead of time.
Yeah. I think we've altered those dates with, with proper notification though.
With a Monday, yeah, okay.
I think, I think you just have to give enough advanced.
You can have a, yeah, yes.
Well, let's, do we need a meeting on the 24th? We don't know.
I would take that. The bills are still going to be paid at the end of the month.
Yeah. Well, they're paid every week.
John, do you have any comment?
Well, yeah, I just, if you're looking at the 23rd, I've got a Lakeland board meeting that day, so that wouldn't work on the 23rd. But, I, I too think probably don't need to meet on the 24th. We can just meet on 31st instead.
So, we'll meet on the 31st.
Okay, and with everything else stays the same?
And cancel the 24th.
Cancel the 24th, yeah.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Brian?
That needs to be posted.
Yes, it would. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess I too was gone a week, a couple of weeks ago. And frankly, I know I'll receive a lot of sympathy from you, but it doesn't seem like it's advantageous to take a week's vacation because everything piles up when you come back. I think I had 16 organized meetings on my four-day calendar last week because we went to Elbow Lake on Friday. And then we added about another four in. So, I had about 22 scheduled meetings last week. So, it wasn't much of a, much of a break. But, like I said, I, I know that the amount of sympathy I'll get from you will be pretty limited.
Yeah.
Anyway, we've had some diversions meetings since we last met. We did have another hardship case, which was a Minnesota case that was approved. That's by the hardship committee that is going to be moving through the channels, which I think speaks again highly that Minnesota is being treated in there. I know Commissioner Everett and I met on a, another issue in regards to the diversion. And, we can certainly update Commissioner Campbell on, on that as he represents the board in that regard. We attended and Commissioner Gross has already reported on this. Met with Dilworth in regards to some options and looking, we're very early in the process there. We did have the CEO of CH2M Hill was in town a week ago last night. And, I did attend the meeting, the, the dinner meeting that he was at. I think I was the only Minnesota person there, yeah, if I remember right. So, I'm, I'm glad I attended. I met with Jenny in regards to the surveyor meeting prior to, we had that surveyor meeting and she had any comments on that. And, that is progressing satisfactorily. Things slowed down a little bit there. We got some clarification on, on when that term will be up. Seems like a ton of personnel issues and meetings and evaluations and things since I got back as well. We are going through the variable hour employee classification and we're coming to a close on that. And, what that is, you referred to them in the past as roster employees. Now, we will refer to them as variable houred employees. And, this has a lot to do with Affordable Care Act and the number of hours we worked and different things. So, we're getting a good handle on that. It's, 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 it's going very well. We had another lean session training that's been set up. And, this is kind of an interesting one because we're looking at filings, I won't say in the recorder's office. But, when someone comes in and, and files a plot or a, or a split, there's five different county departments that get involved in that. And, we are going to look at that process to, and then we send the, the customer around to these different offices. And, there's delays and things like that. So, we want to improve on that process. So, we're pretty excited about having the recorder's office, auditor, treasurer's office, assessors, GIS and zoning involved in, in a lean process. So, we're, we're pretty excited about moving that forward. Had a meeting with Brian Milton. He'll be coming forth with, with the change of a classification of a, of a position that he has. He has the position. He wants to look at upgrading it. That'll be coming to you later. Attended the AMC meeting in Elbow Lake last Friday. I do have the agenda and I do have the printout. So, if anybody wants that, I can certainly make you a copy. But, I think the two commissioners that were in attendance covered it very well. It really highlighted the formula for, for the distribution of the highway funds. That was, that was really the biggie. And, then the Affordable Care Act talked about that some more and how it affects counties. And, I think there is, there is one county in our district that does do a cafeteria-style payment and they do not have a group plan. So, they are going to be really affected by this Affordable Care Act. The, they also were soliciting ideas for legislation for AMC. So, if anybody has something that they want to see AMC push, please bring it to us. We'll, we'll forward it in. And, the county reports a varied, all over the board, I guess, on, on the levies that were, I think the high was close to 6% and the low was probably zero because they'd had a real substantial increase in their county program aid. So, they were able to hold at a zero levy increase.
How did they manage six with the levy limits?
Well, the way they explained it, they said they hadn't figured out what their levy, what their limit would be yet. But, their preliminary levy, they're waiting for a response back from the state as to what, what they can do.
There were some in there for 15, was there?
I don't think that, no.
In the state?
In the state, in the state, not in our district.
In the state, oh, yes, yeah. Yeah. And, and they do that with going outside of the levy for, for debt and things like that. So, but, the one that, that was kind of cute, the one that was in the district said they had the, their preliminary levy was six something, 6.8 or something. And, and they were still waiting for the state to return what, what their levy could be. So, that was kind of interesting. With that, I know we haven't reported much on, on DMV. We are having a meeting with the architect and Robbie this week. There's been a little bit of a communication gap. We're pushing forward on that. We'll get that advertised very soon. But, it's, it's in getting the, the details that we needed. It's been a little bit of a slowdown. I'll tell you what, the construction world is really busy out there right now. Man, it's just finishing up a lot of projects. We're meeting with a couple of internal departments. One is Lakes and Prairies over some IT issues. And, so, there's quite a few things going on in the, in the county. With that, I think, Mr. Chair, I've said enough.
Frank?
A couple items. Does anybody know for sure where this township meeting's going to be at? Is it Garrett, Deter, or Glendon?
Yeah.
Got anything officially yet?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I tried to check on that last night. I will, I will make sure and check that today.
It says a Glendon.
It says Glendon.
They said Garrett before.
Yeah, initially they told us it was at the Garrett. Now, the, the letter from Lepre says, says it's going to be in Glendon, so.
Next question, do, we need a replacement for Cherry Waller on the Arts Agency Recreation Trails. Do we do that or do you do that?
Well, Mr. Chair, when, when you were reporting on that, I guess I thought that maybe I was going to say, did you have any idea, or ask if you had any ideas of people or does anybody else have any ideas? Because it's, you guys come up with a citizen.
It's our appointment, isn't it?
Person to serve on, yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that comes from you.
Maybe you've got somebody in mind?
No, I don't.
Maybe you could find somebody?
Yeah, sure.
Is there anybody that has come to meetings that, you know, that's not on the committee that shows an interest? I just don't know what.
Significant part of that is in your area, isn't it? The trails?
Only six miles from you and to the border. The rest is all in Norman and.
Yeah, but I mean, what is, what is, what is in my county is in your district.
It's all mine.
Yeah, yeah. So, maybe you can find somebody up there in that area.
I'll get help on this, Charlie.
Yeah, Jerry might know somebody.
Yeah, he might have.
Very good. I didn't know who was up to, that's what I'm trying to find. Thank you.
Gentlemen, anything else?
Yeah, I, I just see this letter from the Association of Townships and that, that Monday morning is an extremely bad time for me to get there. And, I know they have us all scheduled to speak.
What is the date?
It's on the 18th.
I think they just do that. So, if we're there and you want a chance to.
But, I would, I would certainly hope that a couple of us could be there. But, that morning is just, unless it's a late morning, it's very different.
I expect to be there and just welcome people.
I'll, I'll be there if I, if I get a final word to say.
But, I think they should know that not, not all of us will be there to speak is what I'm getting.
Well, probably the Senator and the two Senators won't be there.
I never know.
No. Jenny, do you have anything for the good of the order?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleen? We're adjourned.